Call this meeting of the Upsher County Board of Education to order for authoritative business of firsthand information. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission statement, please?
The mission statement for the Upsher County Schools is to provide academic preparation, social responsibility, employability, and a desire of lifelong learning.
Thank you. Please let the clerk note that all members are present with the exception of Mr. Martin. Item four is the approval of the agenda and/or adjustments.
You do have adjustments to the personnel and plus I think Mr. Hoyer gave you another sheet of personnel.
Now I'll go in there and add on that.
Can we have that one correction?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Let me go back to that. Yeah, the number 12 on the employment, that is actually a transfer, not an employment. There goes.
That was my bad.
Just one of those days.
Do I have a motion to accept the agenda with the adjustments as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please sing above us saying aye.
Aye.
Item five, the approval of minutes from the July 18th, 2017 meeting, that is your attachment A. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please sing above us saying aye.
Aye.
Please, if she carries. Item six, acknowledgements and/or announcements of your highlights.
First one, I'd like to introduce Camden Wentz and his dad Scott. And I noticed Mr. Hooch sang in the back there, so I think you are good thing a little bit. But Camden was honored by being chosen to be a member of the West Virginia Youth Symphony. And so in that happening, he got to travel with the West Virginia Youth Symphony to Europe for 10 days. And I've asked Camden, and he's kind of shy, he said, "If you could just talk a little bit about your adventures in Europe, that would be great."
First we flew to Germany, and then we went to Budapest, Hungary, Banceka, the streets got Slovakia, and then Prague and the Czech Republic.
Awesome. How many concerts did you do?
It's three concerts.
What's your favorite thing?
Performing.
Performing?
What's your instrument on the step?
Cello.
Cello?
I'll note that he taught himself cello.
Oh wow. You improved it.
There we go. He learned his alphabet and he learned the whole thesaurus. I just taught him how to put sentences together.
How many, how many members are in the West Virginia Youth Symphony?
About 134.
Wow.
Thirty-four went on the tour.
Oh, just 34?
They got different ensembles.
Oh, okay.
Did you need any good food?
Yeah. Well, they had fried chicken.
Fried chicken's pretty universal.
He's only been playing cello for like a year and a half, so.
Oh wow.
Crazy about it.
What an awesome experience. So how long will he be on the youth symphony? Is it a year or?
He starts in August 28th, every Monday. He's got private lessons in Charleston every Monday, so we're going down to Monday, taking the day, an afternoon of it. And they perform two or three concerts a year, like January, February. He's going to join the chamber down there, which does a separate concert. It's basically the school year, they don't do much in the summer. He's asked to re-audition every year, and he's in until he graduates for five years.
Oh wow. So you're an eighth grader this year, or last year?
I am.
You're going to be an eighth grader. That's why Mrs. Warner's sitting back there being proud. Being proud.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Appreciate your sharing that with the board. It's quite an honor.
Do you have some pictures there?
Always have plenty of them. I took two of them. That's very sure of it. Having that program with all the kids, the countries you went to. They did a send-off concert in Charleston, shut down Capitol Street, missed it in the middle of the street.
Oh wow.
And then did three concerts over there.
Will invite us to the next concert? Wherever it is, in Charleston.
Yeah, it'll be in January.
Had you flown before?
From the original airport, up Upsher County, right near the commercial.
We had 17 days, I mean after the invite is, it was Memorial Day weekend, we couldn't do anything, Tuesday I had to get in the passport. We had 17 days to do it.
Time to get a passport.
Yeah, I'm surprised you were able to do that, because I tripped one too. Yeah. Oh, okay.
These are impressive pieces of music. They open and...
I know Superintendent, we're very proud of the students that get such honors, and we like to brag about them. So I thank you for bringing it to my attention, because I was not aware of it at the time.
But they're all totally good, come down.
Oh, good.
Y'all put a shaking name in.
We have some crowing to do, so.
Yes, exactly.
But he is by far, I think it was 134 kids in like 11 counties, but they're all southern.
Yeah.
There's kids from Ohio and Kentucky right there, across the border from the county communities.
Right, right, right.
They said, because I was at Ian, "Carlisle, is there anybody from?"
And you're, and he was there.
He's, oh, we're way far north from anybody in San Antonio, so.
Well, thank you, I need to thank your parents for being willing to do all that driving for you. It's great.
It was a time.
Someday you just give them three concert tickets.
And it'll help pay for your college education.
That's true.
Well, he's already had a Skype lesson last Thursday with Dr. Erin Ellis, she's a cello professor at WBU, so she did a Skype lesson with him, just because she went through these hard.
Do you want to stay in music? Teach or just become a symphony orchestra member?
A professional.
Awesome.
I don't think Camden's the one, he's just starting. He asked me, you know, when he got, he's like, "Why don't you go to Charleston, why don't there more opportunities in Upsher County?" I'm like, "I don't know, what are you going to do about it?" So he has started, he's starting Upsher County Youth Symphony. He has composed the music for the audition and has, he's about to launch the website too. He wants to get a full orchestra with all, you know, hands and everything.
Oh wow. Not just the strings. That's awesome.
Good for him.
I know Mr. Hooch sang in the middle school, done a great job with our band and just the numbers that I see at those concerts of kids that are performing has been great. It's quite an honor, and I think it's, you guys have done a great job with middle school encouraging it. And then it carries over to the high school.
We tried very hard, and I give most of the credit to the kids, all they did was just tell them what they had to do in order to be successful, and they chose to do the right thing. And I found that that was highly successful, and all students when given the, when given the opportunity, when told they can do something correctly, chose to do it. So I gave a lot of the credit to the kids.
Great, fantastic. Thank you all for sharing.
It's been a long summer.
Mr. Warner, you have any comments?
I'm just so proud of him. Camden is just a fine young man, and I just can't get over his ability. It's amazing. I hope you get a chance to hear him, because he has an outstanding talent, and it's a very natural talent, and we're just, we're just really proud of him, proud of the example he is setting for other kids. And I can't get over the fact that he wants to start a youth symphony.
That's nice.
That's fantastic.
Well, we wish you success with that.
Nice feather in our cap.
I'm sure there's a lot of kids out there that would like to do that kind of stuff, into the music.
And won't have to travel two hours.
And they won't have to travel, yeah, they won't have to travel to Charleston to do it.
Well, based on the numbers coming into the sixth grade, I believe that we increased the numbers by about 25 to 30% coming to the strings program in the sixth grade this year. So, and that was partly due to the tour that I took the students on, where Camden even had a solo on that. And I know that a lot of elementary school kids, fifth grade, coming in at the four schools that we visited, that are highly interested in coming to the string orchestra.
Just going to have to figure out how to persuade him to play bass field and violin, since they all want to be cello players after. I know how that game goes.
He plays the violin too, so. That's why Camden started one, was a violin, for the first semester, and he switched.
Good. But thank you, Camden.
Yes, congratulations.
Hey, did our...
He just came in.
Oh, he just came in?
Mm-hmm.
Officer Day. Come on in, come on in.
You're in trouble.
You have, yes, we do.
Can we, can we, there's a little, okay, get off. Anywhere you want to stay anymore?
Stand on the table.
Yeah, no. I'm thinking that would not work, unless we take a time.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations.
We were really fortunate to get to go and celebrate CJ at the banquet, the PRO conference in Wheeling on July 26th, I think was the date. We had gotten word back at the beginning of July, I think it was, that CJ had been named the PRO Officer of the Year for the State of West Virginia. I think there are 98 PROs in the state of West Virginia, so that is a very big, very big deal, and we're very proud of him. And Jody and I got to go, and it was, it was just a lot of fun, and we're, gosh, it was just a great day. So we asked Tanisha, and I can't remember her last name.
Yeah, I don't remember the last name.
Anyway, the administrative assistant that runs the grant program, and she had written up a very nice write-up for them to announce at the award ceremony. And so we thought it would be nice to get to read that here tonight. So, PRO of the year, this award is given in recognition of outstanding all-around performance of a prevention resource officer, and goes to Corporal Charles Day, Upsher County School Officer Pro at Buchanan Upsher Middle School. Officer Day began the school year teaching school safety, violent, intruder, refresher courses for staff. Officer Day attends our county Board of Education meetings quarterly to give updates on the program and school progress. He continues to promote the PRO program and explain the importance of a positive law enforcement presence in the schools. He attends football games and school dances. He is very instrumental in planning activities for drug abuse awareness and Red Ribbon Week. Officer Day has facilitated classes at Project Isaac, an after-school mentoring and tutoring program. He is a very hardworking and multitasking officer that takes to heart his job as a PRO and for the school system. He makes sure that all of his students have what they need, and always offers his assistance in any way he can help.
He didn't bring a plaque. There's a beautiful plaque, and a traveling trophy.
And a traveling trophy, and a plaque. Very nice, his family was able to be there, and just really proud of the work that he does.
You know how I feel about our PRO officers, we have three really fine gentlemen. Mark at the, Mark Stewart at the Buchanan Academy, and of course Rocky Hev up at the high school. And I saw Rocky the other day, he was just back at work, and he was like, "Man, I am so proud of CJ." He said, "I think that was a fantastic thing that he got." So we're really happy, and I told that next year we'll nominate Rocky or Mark, maybe they'll be the PRO. We'll just continue it through the county.
This is an award that the department actually does, we didn't nominate him at all, and there was another portion of that that tells a little bit about what they talked about, if it's okay, if Jody can read that for me.
I'll have to read that for you. They said, "I have personally seen him work with the student staff and administration at his school, as well as the juvenile probation office. He is respected by all because he is a likable person, and most important, people see that he cares about his position as a PRO. Time is precious, and we are all busy, but he stays in contact, and he lets DJCS, which is the Division of Justice and Community Services, know he is available. He is professional, friendly, supportive, encouraging, and he clearly communicates to the PROs the positive impact we are having upon students. He has proven to be dependable, reliable, and knowledgeable, and he has constantly kept DJCS informed and updated about grant issues and progress. He has also requested the input of DJCS so he can relay concerns to the grant administrators. He is currently serving as a TSGT Technical Sergeant E6 in the National Guard, and he has served for 12 years." And we're just so proud and grateful, and thank you board, I mean, for all of our officers, we couldn't do this without you. And it was an honor to be there with him and his family.
And we, I think we sometimes take for granted CJ's presence in our school. We have had him now, is this the sixth year coming up?
Six, yeah.
We don't have any kids at the middle school that don't know what it's like to have a PRO, and more than half the high school. And it's just to have that positive relationship with law enforcement for them is a great thing, and terrific for us.
And I'm happy to say that CJ was a former student of mine, at National School.
I'm going to say one more thing, his awareness of our surroundings is very important. I remember when we, early on, we had his office downstairs in one of our smaller office-type rooms off of a classroom, and the weekend that Sandy Hook occurred, on Monday, that was on Friday, I think, Monday morning CJ was in my office and said, "I will not be downstairs, I'm going to be right up here where everybody comes in, I want to be at the center of all of it." And so by Tuesday morning, we had him moved. So he wanted to be where people come in, so that he knew who was coming into our school at all times, and so he would be first line of defense if anything ever happened. So we're grateful for him.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
We want to take a five-minute break, so we can congratulate them. Okay, we're back in session?
I'm 10 years older than you.
Item seven on the agenda is unfinished business.
We completed the project at Washington District, and it was completed successfully, and that's pre-mining the sewer line at the school. Did a tremendous cost savings and time saving. So that's a blessing. The project's at the middle school, the new pipes are running, are enclosed, and we're not losing any more water, and so we should be prepared to go. I will have to do a similar project down at Hodgesville, where the old section runs into the new section. And that'll be a project that we'll undertake over Thanksgiving weekend. Shouldn't be as challenging as the middle school.
It's a water leak hole, sir?
Yes, sir. In fact, it's, the pipe runs behind the school, and there's so many different conduits and things that run through the ground. Getting a ditch switch and rerunning the lines out with a question, really. So we're just going to, you know, use the new joints and for the new brackets and run the water line down the hallway like we did at the middle school, so. And it's just a cold water feed, so it'll just be the one line. Maintenance crew's addressing the issues, you know, things are prioritized, and they're getting to them as they can, and very timely. Our building's, you know, the high school's 40 years old, you know, and if you think of your home being 40 years old, or maybe the school's older than that, the middle school, and Rock Haven, some others, there's always going to be projects that we need to do. And the maintenance crew, they're really getting after it, getting as much accomplished as they can, but they're, they're addressing the priorities. And of course, there's always a new priority that will arise, and especially with food service. And softball field, the power company tried to connect the lights yesterday, because they put in the new switch, and when they did, blew a transformer.
That's why they lost the power.
Maybe.
Definitely.
But somewhere around the softball field, there's a break in the line, and so they're going to have to, there's a wire that goes to the left and a wire that goes to the right, and we're talking high voltage, so Dave Mason is going to check, try to find it for us. My concern is, if that's the original wire, it's 47 years old, and we just may, this fall or in the spring have to replace the entire wire. You know, we don't know, because, you know, it just could end up being a Band-Aid after a Band-Aid after a Band-Aid, you know, if it's starting to deteriorate. So, but those are the main things, and we'll be ready for the kids on Monday, whether we are or not, they'll be here.
We'll be ready.
He'll be ready.
Questions? Item eight, financials, that is your attachment B. Anything you'd like to add about those, Mr. Carter?
Share a question.
Motion to approve payment of bills.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please sing above us saying aye.
Aye.
Item nine, consent agenda, out-of-county attendance request, that would be your attachment C, and there are some additional ones there.
We've had quite a few wanting to come to Upsher County, and most of them we've been able to approve.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about any of those?
We still have overages at Hodgesville.
Hodgesville is now up to 39 kindergarteners, the most they've ever had out there. That's two classrooms, so they got 20 and 19 or something there. Which is a good problem to handle, I guess.
Have up to 40.
46.
Or 39.
And they'll both have an A, correct?
Oh yeah.
Both have under 10, and I have an A.
I know, you're in here. I got the teacher.
Yes.
Yes.
Because the best is transferred.
Do I have a motion to accept the out-of-county attendance request?
So move.
All those in favor, please sing above us saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 10, policies, first reading and proposed revised policy, personal lead program, that would be your attachment D, and the first reading and approval of policy 2008, parent involvement, attachment D. Anything you want to say about?
At the last meeting, we talked about some options for revising the policy from how it exists now. This basically gives every employee two paths to get to the attendance bonus. One is, we're having perfect attendance for the year, where you get $100. The second path is, based on their years of experience and having a percentage of the lead days that they've been given over the time they've been working here, so you have, averages that if you miss five or less a year during your appointment term, you have the eligibility to have one of those. I think it's, gives you two paths to get there, and it's easier to administrate than trying to figure out and giving people a piece of a bonus. If you get there by either path, you get $100, unless you have time to go in and do it.
It's a recognition, I mean, that's the most important thing, so.
And we talked about that at the meeting today with the secretaries, and told them what was being proposed, and I took the comments back, were pretty positive about how that was proposed. And it's just a small subset of employees, so we'll see when we put it out for reading, the comments we get.
And then the parent involvement policy?
That's just updating, basically, I don't think policies change other than the dates. So that's why you can go ahead and approve it at this meeting.
Do I have a motion to accept the parent involvement policy, policy 2008, as presented?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please sing above us saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 11, approval of moranda and understanding agreement with community care of West Virginia.
This is a continuation of the ones we have here. The only change is that at Buchanan Upsher High School, they're going to be increasing the number of days to three, because they've had the most, we've gone from like 400 in a year to like 1,200. And that's not only the students, but the staff, using that service there, it's been great. So it's going to help them out as far as being able to see more students, and help the high school out there excited that they're going to be there now three days.
Any questions? If not, I'll have a motion to accept.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please sing above us saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 11, appointment of a board member to the Parks and Recreation Board. Dr. Almond is the current member.
And your term is up. So they called and asked if we could get a new person or...
Okay. I was wearing two hats when I took that over, because of Robbie being off the board and on the board again and so forth. And what's happening to my other assignment, RISA, I guess it'll go away.
Pretty much.
Yeah. It's a nice board to serve on, I mean, that was a nice signage they put up for the Recreation Trail and...
So would you be willing to continue?
If you want me to, that's fine.
Okay.
While making motion, we recommend Dr. Freebirel Almond to serve on the Park and Recreation Board.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart, do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
All those in favor of the motion, please sing above us saying aye.
Aye.
Welcome aboard.
Okay. Recession.
I'll be looking for him if he's not here.
When I was in grade school, that was a joke, but you know, what was your favorite part of school was recess, you know, get out and play, so.
Kids still say that.
Not much.
All right, item 13, correspondence information.
I almost forgot, and Sam Randy reminded me, we received information, we'll bring Rick Wentz in at some point to be recognized by the board. He's our, one of our mechanics at the bus garage, and he was, what's the, you got to give me the name.
Yeah, he was, they had two different contests up in Wheeling. One, the tech side, where you troubleshoot your electrical and your relays, and the other was an inspector to go around and inspect the bus. Rick won first place, he is the state winner. In November, he and I are going to Columbus, Ohio for him to participate in the national tech competition. Smart boy, real smart.
That's great.
In fact, Randy told me if it wasn't for him, we wouldn't have buses on the road.
No, we would literally, and I told Paul to take care of it. And we need to get somebody coming in that can go and pick up Rick and follow Rick, be able to pick up all the computers and be able to troubleshoot. That boy's great, and I'm honest, if it wasn't for him, we'd have to go and farm this stuff out. And he's good, he's darn good, and that proves it, when he won first place in the state.
And we will bring him in to be recognized by the board. That's great.
Question along that line, if, with the Tri-County Vocational School here at Fred Everly, is there any training program that would logically have a mentor, mentorship type of arrangement?
I'm not sure, great draw on that.
In case we could raise up someone.
Right, right. That might be something that I talked to Mrs. Call over at trade school, and see if we can get a line on that, because those electronics are not going to go away.
They're going to get worse.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, even if we could get maybe someone in the program who would be a good fit, like an internship, like a, you know, like a directed, so they could sort of shadow maybe each other somehow.
Right. You know, we'll see on that because like I said, with the multiplex wiring and all those components, it's no longer you flip a switch and that wire goes right directly to what you're turning on. You can literally take that switch and that group of switches over there and move it anywhere on that board and it'll still operate the same component. And it may have to go through three or four or five relays to get where it needs to go. And it's not something that, like I said, that us old farm boys can go and trace and get it to work. I mean, you've gotta have more knowledge to be able to conquer the problem.
Yeah. Yeah. The other thought to perhaps check on would be, in my area, there were a lot of Vietnam veterans coming back. They were highly trained, couldn't get jobs, but they would, they could be given a grant to work for a year, you know, government paid their salary if they could fit into a job eventually.
Right.
And there might be military people still, I just don't know the arrangements.
Well, that's something that, you know, that I'll have to investigate. And then, like I said, if we can get some really good information and feedback, that is something that I may present to Roy and present to you folks and see if we can't get some sort of a program up and running as long as it don't deter Rick from his job.
All right. Energy, keep up.
But, yeah.
Anything else? All right. Next item on the agenda is personnel. You have that as your attachment J. This might be the biggest personnel list I've ever seen.
And we're not done. And we're not done. Yeah, and the addition.
The addition that you were received.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstaining, Adrian. Item 15 on the agenda, delegations of public comments.
Maybe just a comment we, at the same time we're meeting, there's a revival meeting downtown in Chalvo Park. And hearing about that, I realized there was an overlap, at least a word play, because I'm always interested in that. But as we have occasion for student discipline, they're saying let us have discipleship programs, training up people to be more effective in their church and in the community in order to tackle drug problems and same type of problems that we're trying to deal with. And I thought, well, that's a nice thing. We will deal with the student discipline as we need to according to policies. But it's good that we have a community that's interested in discipleship.
All right. Item 16, board member comments. I attended a meeting on Saturday at Stonewall with a panel of people from State Department and other entities about the formation of the Educational Service Cooperatives, ESCs, that is, the entity that's going to replace RISA. There's gonna be some changes coming our way as a result of those. One of the things that they were talking about on Saturday, the word entrepreneurial was batted around frequently. And systems are going to have to figure out what services they have that they can offer to other people. So, we are gonna have some changes. There is going to be an advisory council, so we will still have a representative from the board along with the superintendent on that. But that, we are at the very beginning stages of this. And actually, Dr. Call is going to provide some guidance, but I just wanted to mention it and say that it was coming and it's going to impact us all.
And I'd like to thank the voters of Upper County for the passage of the levy. Turns right around to the point that we can recognize our PRO officers in a good job that they're doing in our school system and we couldn't do, deal with it. And levy funds are very much appreciated.
In my day job, I've been contacting the schools where we place the college volunteers. And so, I just want to thank all of the teachers and administrators who are so gracious. Not only are they teaching all the students, but they're also teaching the college students about how to be good role models. And, you know, I know that the college students bring a lot in being able to provide the one-on-one math and reading support like as needed. But I had a great meeting with Mr. Gray yesterday and the squires today. And so, we're looking forward to continuing to put service scholars and federal work study students into the schools. We really appreciate that. We'll have 80 service scholars in the community in some capacity, not just in schools, but there are nonprofits in the community. And probably looking to push about 20 work study students. So, about 100 Westland students who will be volunteering regularly, weekly commitments throughout the county.
Anything else? Item 17, the next meeting date will be Tuesday, August 22nd. And that meeting will be moved to Buchanan Academy. We've not been there all summer, so I'm at 7:00 PM. Next item on the agenda is student hearing. Could I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session for student discipline hearing, West Virginia Code 69A43.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of going into executive session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're now in executive session. Do I have a motion to go back in regular session?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're now back in regular session.
I'd like to recommend that student LCRTES 1617 be expelled from school for one school year for violation of Upsher County Schools Policy 4011 and West Virginia State Policy 4373, expected behaviors in safe and supportive schools. Have to return to regular school. While we already talked about that, second semester.
Do I have a motion to accept that recommendation as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Right. I would like to also recommend that student TCDS 1617, excuse me, be expelled from school for one school year for violation of Upsher County Schools Policy 4011 and West Virginia State Policy 4373, expected behaviors in safe and supportive schools. Return to regular school, second semester.
Do I have a motion to accept the second recommendation as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? I didn't hear you. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is now adjourned.